Welcome, everybody. We have a private matter that we're going to discuss behind closed doors. So if we're...can we just convene in the...oh, okay, thank you.
Someone will need to make this motion on the screen.
Executive conference room to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation as provided by Utah Code annotated 52-4-205.
Let's do a roll call vote. Do we need to second it?
Yes.
Okay, so seconded and then roll call, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And you shall be adjourned. It doesn't matter.
Here, we'll go back to the introduction slide.
All right, welcome, everybody, to Highland City Planning Commission. Thank you all for attending. We will have an opening prayer by Commissioner Jerry Abbott, if you'd be willing to do that. And then Sherri, would you be willing to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for all the many blessings that has given us. And we're grateful for the opportunity to live in a country where we can meet and make decisions as a community. And we ask the Spirit to be with us this day, that we can be able to be inspired of those things. We'll best fit those who live in the city of Highland. And we're grateful for all that thou provides for us, and this we pray humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now spend some time for unscheduled public appearances. If anybody would like to address or talk about anything that is not on the agenda, if you'd please come up and state your name and limit your remarks to three minutes, please. All right, if we have no takers, Doug, do you want to do any public remarks? Okay. Okay, next, let's review some of the consent items. We've got minutes from August as well as September.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th meeting as well as the September 23rd meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, let's have a roll call on that. Debra?
Yeah, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. So now let's move on to text amendment. This is a legislative change in our code, well-drilling conditional use consolidation, just as part of our cleanup that we've been busy with for the last three years in updating and clarifying and amending our city code. Rob, would you be willing to kick us off and walk us through this, please?
Thank you. As Chair Houghton explained, this is part of our ongoing process of cleaning up our code. In fact, we specifically noted, when we created the land use table, I noted this was a section that we still needed to revisit and clarify. And Wes even had a question saying, "We're going to do this in the future, right?" And I said, "Yes, we are." So we're beginning to address it now. We have a public utility zone that's existed in the city for many years, but isn't as well applied as it should be. And we have a supplemental regulation regarding public facilities. And what's interesting, it says that regulation says, "Any above-ground device or structure of a culinary water irrigation reservoir or private utility system," kind of goes on, "shall only be located within the public utility zone." Notably, those regulations do not apply to lot-specific utilities, so utilities put on a lot that only serve that lot. This is for broader services that go beyond the property, a substation like next to Myers. Our R140, 30, and 20 zones do allow well-drilling as conditional use. However, that seems to match that public utilities definition of an above-ground device or structure of a culinary water irrigation reservoir or private utility system, so it should be part of the public utility zone. So the proposal is to remove well-drilling as a conditional use within the residential zones and then make sure it's clearly added into the public utility zone. Now, at a future date, we will also go through and rezone all of our own well sites and any other appropriate facilities that exist in Highland to this zone. That way, any changes, modifications to those site going forward will fall under the same standards. We'll have kind of more uniform standards going forward, especially for the city. When we've kind of, as, on an ad hoc basis, when we've upgraded our wells or drilled them, we've given out notices to all the neighbors, knowing that, hey, we're going to be drilling for 48 hours straight, and it's going to be really bad for you. But this will formally require even the city, with its own systems, to go through kind of a notice process so the public's aware of what utility systems we're working on. We published notice of this on October 9th, mailed it to affected entities, received no comments. So our recommendation is to hold a public hearing, because this is a code amendment, and then recommend approval of the proposed amendments. I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Rob, I have a question, if I may. So we still have, although Highland is primarily built out, we still have some parcels where people are doing agricultural work. So just to clarify for any residents that may be concerned, if... and I don't want to pick on the buylers, but I'll just use them as a handy example. And I realize they're in the county, so that makes it even more complicated. But let's use a...so let's not use the buylers. Let's use some other agricultural application parcel, where those people procure the appropriate water rights. They go through the change application process. The water's diverted to their lot somewhere in Highland for their farm or whatever their agricultural operation is. Would that still be permitted under this?
Yes, so say someone where they had groundwater rights, and they wanted to drill a well for use of their own property. They want to drill a well for drinking water or to irrigate their property. We have a couple of those places still in Highland. They would still be allowed to do that, as long as they're serving their own property. If, you know, they want to drill a well and now serve a new development, we have a secondary water system in the city, then you might have to have that well rezoned. And we talked to them about, why do you want to build a new culinary water system when we have a great one in Highland? But, so, for their own property, still allowed. Trying to serve off-site properties is where we just say, let's go through the rezone process and then apply the appropriate standards to that going forward.
Thank you for answering.
It also wouldn't apply ditches, irrigation canals, and the like. Those wouldn't fall under this.
So, Rob, just to be clear, when we have a...does our water system have a service area? But in the state of Utah, it allows other people within that service area to start another service?
Potentially. It's all...that's mostly based on where your groundwater right is located. And I'm not a water law expert, so...but essentially, you have to get approval. You have to have a water right, and it has, which each water right, a point of diversion where you can pull it. And the state engineer is in charge. People can apply through a change application process to change the point of diversion from one location to another. And so the state engineer reviews that. We actually went through that process. We own...well, it's kind of a surface water right. We own some water rights down in Highland Hollows. It's a spring, and we were trying to change that so we could pull it into our wells instead. And so we had to go through a change application process and get it reviewed by the state engineer, because we're moving it from the Highland Hollows area to all of our wells throughout the city. So theoretically, someone else could do that. We all...the aquifer is not just Highland's aquifer, it's North Utah County aquifer. So we all share in that, and the state engineer is responsible for overseeing that diversion process.
So two questions. One, just to clarify Chris's question. I understand that this change, private individual can still do what they want on their own land, but that's...the question for me is, do they have to go through the public utility? Or it...they are excluded from that?
They're excluded for it as long as they're just servicing their own property.
So no change...this change has no effect? They fall under the old rule?
Correct.
Okay. The other question, can you go back to the very beginning? You made reference to substations or utility servicing. Was that just as a reference, or are we also applying that to substations?
So, that's actually in the public utility zone currently. It's supposed to apply to power substations and the like. So we'll also rezone the property west of Myers, because that is a Rocky Mountain Power Substation. We should have that as a utility zone, just so it's clear. In fact, you'll see reflected in our next item, General Plan. We've indicated some properties as utility. We're trying to match those up as well.
Okay.
So, like a little power box, it's just, you know, the big green boxes, the transformers that are in, you know, like utilitiesments, doesn't apply to that. We're talking the large, you know...
Substation.
Substation, yeah.
Yeah, I'm clear what a substation is, but when we talked about transmission, and the first thing that popped up is all the solar panels on people's homes. That is a power source, and when it's fed back into the overall grid, it is now a substation of sorts. Was that addressed, or has that been sufficiently excluded from this?
We actually have separate regulations specific to solar panels that allow them in residential areas. So we've kind of exempted them from this. And also, quasi would fall under the serving your own lot, even though the way the power is bought and sold, it doesn't always do that.
Okay, nope, that...thanks for the clarification.
Of course.
Just real quick, Rob, when you say allow solar, we can't not allow solar, right?
Right, we can't not allow it. State law requires us to allow it. We have some regulations about it.
Right, okay.
It is a public hearing, so...
All right, thank you. Any questions before we move to public hearing? Okay, let's open it up for comments from the public. I see Mr. Casper has made his comments, so we'll...if nobody else has anything, let's conclude public comments. And then time for discussion amongst the commissioners, if any. Would anybody like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed amendments. And that the Planning Commission may...if...I don't think we have anything that we're specifying, so I just move that we do approve this motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Would Debra?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes that. And now let's move on to the General Plan comprehensive update. Rob, would you take us...take it away?
I would love to. So we've talked about this for a very long time. We're almost two years into this process and hopefully at the final end of it here. So most recently, on September 11th, we provided notice to the public and to various entities that we were...Planning Commission was considering recommending a plan and gave notice of your September and October meetings. On September 23rd, our last meeting, a complete draft was presented and shared with the public, and then we asked for comments to be received by October 16th. As of today, I've still not received any comments from the public, but we got a lot of comments from planning commissioners, which I very much appreciate. I kind of broke them into two groups. One is the things that either were minor changes, or we thought were necessary, or all of you supported it. So those have already been implemented in the draft that was attached to the agenda. And the other set are all the things where people had made a comment for us to discuss, and so we'll walk through all of those and see if we need to make any additional changes. I'll say, we have Hales Engineering, so we might want to touch on the transportation plan portion a little bit early, so they don't have to stay through the entire night. But just to go through the changes that have already been implemented, we removed the slogan from the cover. We clarified the vision statement to be about single-family homes, not about one single family living in a neighborhood. Removed some unclear language from the introduction of the introduction. We added a legend to a table. We updated the existing land use map to show the Highland Family Park as a park entirely. We also updated the future land use map to show the 11200 North Church Baseball Field property as religious on the east and private park on the west for the existing fields. We shifted the kind of gateway circle showing of where our future gateways are for Longhorn to be more over the Longhorn area. This is one staff added. I went through, as I was re-reviewing the plan, that we didn't have a Parkway detail section. So I wanted to have a page added that discusses our Parkway detail, because it is important. It outlines where we have it. And I'll show you that page in a second. It was in what was in the draft, but... We added a note to the 4800 West project. A few of you had comments about this, saying that as we do this project or do further improvements, we should make sure to allocate costs between Alpine and Highland appropriately, based on who actually uses it more. So we added that note into that plan. We clarified that smart irrigation controls are being installed in existing parks, not just new ones. And we corrected the number of pickleball courts in Highland Family Park. Good catch there. A few other comments. We will have internal hyperlinks connecting all of those things. We're just going to wait till the pagination is done, so we link it correctly. Went through, corrected some minor typos and grammar issues. And then the water element, I'm going to discuss that a little more later, because we had some comments from DWR that we received very late that we've tried to address. And we have some data to share with the commission as well. And then Transportation Master Plan, it just got finalized, so we added the Parkway detail. We finalized the active transportation discussion. Of note, based on the council and commission's discussion regarding the Dry Creek Trail, you'll notice one map in the active transportation plan shows it, because that's MAG's map, and they show it. Our maps, however, don't show that connection, as the council and commission directed us. And then we added the appendices of the technical studies and reports supporting the Transportation Master Plan. So with that, I'm going to skip ahead to Transportation Master Plan to discuss kind of any changes we need to make. Sorry, there's a lot there. Okay. So, just by way of information, we saw one of the maps was not the final version, so we corrected a map. The kind of last big question, unless...I didn't see, hear any comments, but we're happy to go through any additional comments you may have. Where's my... Sorry, I meant to have this ready, I apologize. So here's the Transportation Master Plan. There's a summary in the General Plan, which you all read and reviewed, and then this was also presented for you to review. It's just kind of expanding on the projects and details that are in the General Plan. One question we had...let me find the page here. All right, I think this is...yeah, this is it. "We have a plan for a new active transportation roadside trail along the north side of SR92. Currently, the plan kind of has it stopping as it hits Bull River and not connecting all the way to Highland Boulevard. Highland Boulevard has a similar trail system that goes up it. So our question is, should we connect those two? We weren't sure...we hadn't really talked about that, so we didn't want to make that plan or not. But it's one of the things we wanted to get direction from the commission on."
There's that tunnel that goes underneath SR92 that's right there in Bull River. They did it as a walking, and then it got fenced off, and then... Because just trying to connect from there over, there's that big dip.
Yes.
But if the trail could go down to that, cut over, go up to the light, and cross over, I think that was the original...it would connect both sides?
Sorry, Jerry.
So, so in Bull River, there's a tunnel that goes from Bull River over to the lake? It was supposed to be a walking path, and then it got abandoned and a bunch of graffiti, whatever. But just to connect from there over, there's this huge dip. It would be really hard to get a trail. But if the trail could go to that point, go under, and then back up, and then cut...then they have the crosswalk to get back over. So, you know, where Smith's, the corner of Smith's, and there's a bank right there. That big intersection, Highland Boulevard. But it goes under, goes to the lake, and then it connects to that trail, and then you can come up onto that trail and then cross over.
I'm asking which crossover after it goes to the lake and then up, are you 6,000?
There's that crosswalk that's right there that goes up Highland Boulevard. I mean, that's...I think it's worth putting in the plan to explore that. That needs to be in there, too, because it's there.
Yeah. We like to have in the plan, because as UDOT looks at doing projects, that way we can say, yes, we do want to make a connection, and here's how we're kind of tentative looking at it, so that way they know that the city's on board with that project.
And then when you put that in, just do the right-hand turn at the same time.
And Jerry, does that include tying in where the Murdoch Canal Trail connects into that? You know how it goes down by the lake?
Yeah, I think the Murdoch Canal Trail is more in the lake area. This is the paved area that comes along SR92 on the south side. And then it kind of dips, and then that can come up and around if we... It's something that could be done. I don't think it could go straight.
Right.
Because there's just too much.
So I'm just trying, and it's a lot of...
I think it's worth putting in the plan.
Figure out a way to...because that sounds great. If there's a way to also bring in the Murdoch Canal path that cuts through next to the reservoir and comes up behind Smith's.
So there is a way to connect with that?
Yes. They would have to cross over. Yeah, it could be done. And I'm saying, this is a Bull River residence, we would hate that. But I think for the city, that would be a good...it's worth having on the map to explore it.
Because, Jerry, just from a practical point of view, I think that's a brilliant suggestion. It doesn't mean that we would...you know, we might get MAG funding to do a pedestrian bridge or something like that. Or this is not specific yet, it's just broad brushes.
Yeah, I mean, I just see that there can be a connection there. There could be the right-hand turn, because that's going to get in the way too, just to make that whole area just a little more pedestrian-friendly and access-friendly. Because I always slow down to like five miles an hour before I turn in, and everybody behind me is honking. So I just see...I think it should be on here, because I think it would benefit the city, whether it happens or not. I'm getting the sense if it's not on here, we don't even look at it, right?
That's kind of how it goes.
Yeah, so I would put that on there.
Any objection to that?
No.
I think that's a brilliant suggestion.
Very great.
Okay, anything else you want to talk about or bring up to the commission? Got to come to the mic and state your name.
All right, Sean Elliott, and I'm with Hales Engineering. Are we talking on the map there then basically an underpass under Tempanogos to get over to the lake area?
Yeah, it's already there. It's already built.
So basically, where the orange line ends, or somewhere in there, we would bring it over to where this underpass is and tie it over. Okay, that makes sense.
And Scott, it's not necessarily saying it is going to go through the underpass, but just the concept of that we would have some kind of a whatever path was needed to accomplish it, some sort of flow that went from east to west and then heading north up Highland Boulevard.
Yeah, the reason the map looks like this now is there's already a trail on the south side of the road in that area. And when we drew this, we were thinking to continue on the south side, but then right at the last moment, we were told, put it to the north side. And then there was this blank space, and nobody caught it. And so that's why the discussion is here now. But if we can tunnel it under or use the current tunnel, that's a great... That gets you over to all the, like you said, Murdoch and everything else.
Yeah, because I see a lot of bikes coming down the north side, and then when they get there, they realize everything's coming to an end, and that's where the on-ramp is for the commuter lane. And they kind of scoot across, because they don't want to shoot across, you know, six lanes. But if they went along the side where you drop down, go to that tunnel, and then come back up over, Wes would know this.
But to the point, why duplicate it? There's...that would put trails on both sides, go back up to the light across there, and go down the existing trail, and you don't even need to add that whole section.
No, I agree. I just think it's worth having on here in case it becomes... Because bikes are still doing...they do end up where our turn is, and then they realize once they're there...
I have to dodge them every morning on my way to work.
Yeah, they're like, oh, there's not a...there's no way to keep going here. And so I'm not saying it happens, but if it's not on here, like Rob's saying, we don't explore it, at least. I think it's worth...as a possibility.
It sounds like, look at making that connection and explore using the existing underpass that the tunnel...
Yeah, I mean, the biggest expense is done. The tunnel's there, even as lights...
If I may just suggest that we don't need to get down into the weeds here, you know? Just conceptually, the notion of having some sort of flow that is continuous, whichever path we choose to use, whether it's south, north, or both, in the future. Okay, great. So 26 is check.
Yep, that's the end of it. And anything else you want to share about the Transportation Master Plan while you're here?
Well, we added all of the safety data, the intersection data. It's...not to say it's boring in Highland, but compared to other cities, you guys are doing pretty good, so... And we added the trail data, so I'm trying to think. No, I think we covered it all, unless you had any questions from it.
I have a question. So when I was looking through the General Plan, the update, it didn't mention the speed mitigation that's been talked about many, many times in the council meetings. Has that been incorporated? Did we add any of that in there?
I don't believe that was in the scope, the speeds part, but it could be.
We have a separate traffic calming manual and policy. So I think it's more that falls under, but we'll also talk about whether we should put that in the General Plan as well. So we'll talk about that. It wasn't part of your scope.
Right, right. And I know I asked the same question, and I was referred to that same plan, so...
Scott, thank you very much for all the work you've...
Have you ever done a speed study? Have you done speed studies on that road?
Yes, several, many.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go through the rest of the comments we had. And as Commissioner Houghton explained, the goal of the General Plan is to be a general plan. Now, we want enough specifics to implement it, so these questions will hopefully flesh out those areas that we still need to add detail. So let us know what we still need to do here. And the first question actually came from Trent, generally is, do we need to get more specific with our goals and objections, or objectives? As we were talking, the best way we thought about doing that is, we have like goals and implementation measures for each chapter. And except for modern income housing, we don't have any timelines for that. We just say, do these things at some point. Probably the easiest way to make it more actionable would be to say, we want to have this done in three years, or four years, or five years, like we do with modern income housing, where every year we kind of have separate goals. The downside of that is, if we fall behind, now are we not meeting our general plan? And should we update it again? Or, you know...so that's the first question. Do we need to get more specific in our goals and objectives?
One of the things I was wondering is, we were just talking about the water and what we had just voted on, and about those areas that we want to rezone as utility areas, and a reasonable timeframe in which that needs to be done.
So that would be more just a staff direction rather than a general plan direction?
Okay, so that would...okay, that's what I was just making sure. Thanks.
I would say don't put times on it, because I don't want to get an outdated general plan if our focus became something else for a while, depending on who's in office, you know what I'm saying? And then somebody wants to focus on that. To put...I don't want three years from now to have an outdated general plan.
Yeah, I concur. I don't think we need to be more specific.
Any dissenting thoughts?
I do not, I do not think.
Okay, sounds like we're good to leave them as is. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. There are some comments kind of throughout about the place-making concept that was introduced. And a lot of it focuses on, a lot of, we haven't fully achieved this, because we didn't have a full plan before. Our thought as staff was, this is good to have, because as we redevelop, or maybe we get funding, we'll try to implement it where we can. And it may be a multi-decade process to get there, but the thought was, we can at least have it in there to think about when we are doing zoning and updating codes and the like. So is it good to keep that place-making? Do you like... Do you like that concept in the general plan, what we've talked about? I'm seeing, I think a majority is saying yes.
Yes.
There aren't many places in the plan that address specifically kind of that.
Microphone?
Cultural vision. There aren't many places in the plan that address specifically that, that, the cultural vision for Highland, you know, like specifically what defines us as a community. So I feel like it's a good inclusion.
Rob, just a clarification. So we skipped a couple of these items and this, what is presented now is not quite what we received as a packet.
I was going through the same ones.
Number two.
I think on the screen is kind of like high level.
It's a summary of the question.
Sorry, I was looking at number five instead of number two.
Okay.
Move on.
Okay.
Get a new chair.
I do have a question, Rob, about place making because as you probably saw from my comments, I'm, I'm all about it. Because that's the only way we can become cohesive, I think, at this point in our buildup. And someone had mentioned, someone had made a comment about, you know, check, like that the benches or the styles or something about it be cohesive throughout the city, which I thought was a really good idea. Because that's something that will tie that all together, however we do that. Is that something that we would have in the plan or is that something we have to?
The exact style?
Well, no, 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 just that it should be cohesive or it should be blah, blah, blah worded such that we can have these things built and done, anything that's new. And it can, like I said, it can be done incrementally, you know, we can buy, we can do what we can and then when we build the next thing, have it cohesive with that last one in some form.
Something like that with the, the design standards document. And it's old, right?
Well, I just think that, I don't see any cohesiveness in buildings at all and, you know, anything.
Does that get updated, Rob? Is that kind of the docket after the general plan, the Highland City Design Standards Guide?
It's not on the docket. Part of that is a, it is in a sense, we have one of their goals for place making is to update, they called it a form based where we say, kind of like we did with POZ, where we give directions on how we want things to look rather than getting really specific and try to create that. And to do that, we would need to create a better document than what we have or update it for current day. So it's, it's part of the general plan to look at that. We don't have a, like, I'm going to be drafting that in the next six months type of thing.
What's the role of that current document? Like it's genesis, it's, does it carry any weight?
It's very detailed.
It is incredibly detailed. It's back when the town center, south of SR 92 down there, got master planned as this big development where we're going to have ground floor retail and multifamily residences on top of it. And then as things came in, the way the code worked, they kind of didn't have to do certain things. We got different developments that didn't kind of all mesh together. And that kind of ground floor retail was lost because it wasn't supportable at the time. So it was like a really good vision that just didn't capture, didn't have great implementation. And that was, I don't think it's anyone's fault, it's just we did our best with, you know, over the years. So we need to update that, but we should update it for the overall town center and have it be something that we can say, not just town center, which excludes Macy's and excludes 10700 and exclude Highland Maines.
The whole downtown.
It should be all of us, we have a similar look.
I think it's what Jerry said, that it kind of depends on the council and what they want at the time. And there were some councils that just didn't even look at it.
It's always a matter of.
So obviously there was some vision, there was some vision and they put the little clock tower and they did this little town center thing. But some of the things that kind of draw in, because we've got SR 92 going through the middle and then we have North County Boulevard that we now, at least our portion of it in Highland, is you've got the lampposts, you have the park strips and you have what many cities do is whatever you hang on the lampposts and we're the city of trees. And we have our one little design implement that's rather businesslike.
But it's just not.
That, you know, if there was something that we wanted to do to kind of unify that and make it look like, oh, you're going into the Alpine Loop and you've just come out of the Alpine Loop and here's Highland City, then it would be more of a design implement that you would want to do and make it more charming with those features. Because we can't change the buildings and we can't change the, but we can change the charm of the entrance and the corridors.
But we can create some, not very tight vision, but of what we're going to do going forward.
Correct.
You know, and what we're allowing as far as whatever and what we want to do with the place making type stuff.
And we could, we could choose materials, heights, lamps being the same, da, 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 unity, tree spacing with our parkscape that we're zero escape.
Is that a general plan thing?
Yeah, that was like my main question.
Or is that a design? That seems too detailed.
The existing document, is it part of the general plan?
It's not part of the general plan.
Right?
It's just a document. So what I would say is if you want more direction, we could, you know, add in, because we have, you know, one of our strategies for place making is to adopt clear, high-quality design standards and we kind of, there's a description of that. We could make sure we mention, we have unified public amenities such as benches, lampposts. We're not going to say this lamppost is what we're going to do. It's, we will look at that in the future to create that document so we have a unified approach.
That's what I, yeah.
So if I could sort of suggest something, my personal answer to the question would be, please keep it. Even though the word is just some goofy trendy, you know, design word, but good to keep as a discussion, even though it's going to require a lot of more work in the future. I would not be in favor of killing the concept.
I think place making is a dictionary word now.
Yeah, it's a trendy.
But it's, I think it's, I mean, they use it for, I've read it everywhere and all over the country and blah, blah, blah. I think it's kind of made some foothold.
So is there, would you like us to add in a, you know, as part of the discussion, just say something along the lines of, and make sure as part of updating our design standards, we incorporate streetscape and public amenities to also reflect that.
Definitely.
I would like to see that too.
We can add in language to that effect.
That's what I, yep.
Number four was, we have a description of in our land use table, oh, sorry, back up. I skipped number three. Couple you asked, should we call the future land use map, potential future land use map? In some regard, up to the planning commission, this is a general plan, so it seems like we should say what we do intend for this future land use, but it all is potential. So I'm, I'm ambivalent.
Well, I, I like that, but then I started thinking, well, right now it's potential, but as soon as the city council approves it, it's going to be the plan.
At some point, it always, it's always a continuing from current to future.
Yeah. But not if it's worded as potential, it'll stay in the plan as potential.
Because if it's changed and it doesn't match what's in the plan, then it's, I mean, that complicates.
If we say future.
From a grammar point of view, my diction and grammar teacher would chastise me for using redundant words like potential and future next to each other.
So consensus, potential future or just future land use?
Yeah, either potential or future.
Yes.
Should we just keep future land use?
Yes.
Done.
Yeah, but that's, excuse me.
So just for clarification, so right now it's future land use, but isn't it going to be the general plan?
It will be the, the general plan, but the future land use map doesn't say this specific zone goes this specific place. It says, this is all going to be residential. This is all going to be a commercial.
Okay, the ones that aren't, okay.
They still have to come in and ask for rezone, which goes through the whole public hearing process. This just says, this is what the city thinks we could be fine with, then come talk to In the place making section, we, it talks about town center and then I believe Longhorn. I think Wes said, you know, should we focus on the civic center, this kind of square here as a subset of town center, like, so it has its own place making ideas. And if I'm paraphrasing it wrong, Wes, feel free to correct me or anyone else when I get to your comments.
So Wes, tell us what you're thinking there.
I'm trying to remember. I might have to pull up the.
Are you, are you trying to say that they're not the same thing, that one's one and one's the other?
Rob, tell me what I was thinking. Come on.
The civic center portion.
I know. I knew what I was saying at the time, I'm just trying to recall what specific.
You said the library squared, civic center area of the city needs to be its own third bullet point because we have town center and then gateways and corridors was our two big place making ideas.
Yes, 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 yes. I don't know. Yeah, no, I think it needs to be, I think that it, it will be like a preeminent place making place. Sorry, Chris, redundancy. In the future, and I think that, you know, right now it's got a little bit of library, a little bit of a splash pad, but I think that if we're just focusing place making on a commercial area and, where's the other one?
Wes, I'm agreeing with you, but just would you be willing to consider the fact that the town center includes inside of it the civic center?
Absolutely, absolutely.
This is not purely just commercial stuff.
Yeah, no, no. And I, I think that, you know, it, the town center, absolutely, because it's, it's pretty much in the town center, not specifically zoned as the overlay. But if we can include some sort of language that defines how we want, you know, this specific area addressed or, you know, potential uses for, you know, developing this area or expanding upon services that we already have, you know, like the library, like, you know, expanding the historical society and the kinds of really neat things that it has to offer or, you know, the arts council. Because there's so much demand on, you know, for programs. And there's really no other place for them to go and expand to except here in the town center in this specific civic center area.
So maybe I'll ask.
There's also the senior center over by Heritage Park.
Yeah, where kind of they are now and it's, it's just not enough. I could see some point where the city kind of takes over that entire building, displacing, you know, the, the, the programs that go on now because they find a better home somewhere else, you know? Yeah, but that was my only intention is, is, is really like focusing on some of the city services like the library offers and like the arts council and the historical society and, and potential future ones and including that as a specific place making goal or, or vision within the town center.
Within the town, yeah. I automatically considered this within the town center.
It is part of the town center.
Yeah.
So maybe we have these, this list of strategies for how to enhance place making in the town center. Would it be, should we add a, another row here that says the civic center and kind of have ideas for how to make the civic center, how to enhance it, including property there to also be consistent with the rest of this and draw people into this area? Would that kind of meet that goal?
Yes, I think.
Or Rob, maybe consider just maybe a, an additional sentence, because to me at least, community events and programming, it's kind of mushed into there in any case.
Because there's, I, I don't recall a place in the town center section that refers to anything over here. It's all the commercial area and it's, and the future commercial area. And, you know, community events and programming in that area.
So I'm saying like, should we add a row that talks specifically how we can enhance the civic center and incorporate or integrate it with the rest of it?
Yeah, yeah. Because I don't have a problem with it as it exists. I just think it's missing.
Or clarifying the community events and programming to, you know, talk about civic services that we provide here and expand it when, you know, with our remaining property based on what the residents want.
And just for clarification, if you don't mind me asking, do we, with zoning and whatnot, have we reached our capacity in height for say this building?
For this building? What do you mean capacity?
In height, so if we, things were to expand and go up.
Oh, I mean.
Like for a library and things like that.
I mean, we can always change our own zoning. I don't know that we've hit our 35 foot max height on the building or parts of it we may have like in here, but it gets lower on the wings. I don't know if, I haven't looked at the plans for the building.
I was just curious if there was ever talks about expanding on this center in particular for the needs.
There's been some talks about expanding, but that's kind of a library discussion and funding, so not part of the general plan. Sounds like there's some consensus to address the civic center as part of the town center place making in some capacity. Is that?
Just make.
Yeah, because I, I feel like one of the very first discussions that we had, you know, together with staff and council was kind of about this idea of, what kind of specific character will Highland take on in the next 10, 15 years? And are we willing to put in the focus and the time and the, and the money to, you know, I remember Deborah brought up, was it some chalk art thing up in, you know, as, as an example of something that.
I've just given examples of how to get people to come together with doing stuff.
And yeah, and, and I think a lot of those things, one of the only ways to get some of those things to happen is through the public-private partnerships, right? And to actually conduct some of those things in say, you know, the Highland Maines area or, you know, in our commercial areas. And I think that it addresses that really well right now in the, in the town center place making part. And I think I wanted to just include something that also brought in more, you know, public, strictly public place making efforts. So the library and, you know, arts council and historical society that don't necessarily need to be this public-private partnership. And, and it could just be like defining community events and programming a little better because I think it comes off as a public-private partnership kind of thing or at least public events in private areas like town center, shopping areas, you know, to where it says, people spend more time in the town center, frequenting local businesses and other attractions. It just kind of comes off as doing things in commercial areas for commercial reasons.
So would you want community events?
Yeah, like in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So clarify maybe community events and programming to enhance the, the public service that we provide and make sure that connects into it. Is that, I think I'm hearing a consensus to do something like that?
Yep, let's do it.
That we will do that. Okay. The next question related to gateways, part of it was kind of why did we talk with the Longhorn?
Rob, would you mind going back to number four? I believe we skipped that.
Oh, we did, I am so sorry. I get so excited. Someone had a comment on, in the land use map, we have different kind of categories. And we had a description of the mixed-use commercial office area. And someone asked, you know, should we specify, I can't remember who off the top of my head, just whether we should ensure that those mixed-use commercial office areas also integrate with our parks and trail system. Is there support for making that specific?
That was Audrey, actually.
And I was actually.
That was an Audrey comment.
I was actually for the purpose of connecting this to like our mountain ridge park, Heritage Park, to whatever. So if there was any kind of thematic element to know where city center is, where the civic areas are.
I think it's a great idea.
Some kind of thematic thing.
Because we already talked about being walkable. I think it'd be easy to say walkable and then integrated with the city's trail and park network. Sounds like we're consensus on that.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I, I like, you know, kind of defining mixed-use areas as being someplace that promotes walkability and tying it in that way. I think, I love that comment, I agree.
Okay, thank you for keeping me honest on my numbering. Next one was the gateways. So there was a question about, you know, why did we talk specifically with Longhorn and focus on that so much? And from staff's view, it's because we were kind of pushed, not pushed, there was a lot of focus on it. We knew there was a lot of focus on it. The mayor even told me, I think, once that one of his main goals was to figure out what was going to happen with Longhorn. So that's why there was a lot of discussion about and with the Longhorn owners. Whether we listen to them ultimately is up to the commission and council. They don't get to dictate necessarily any zone changes. And then kind of a broader question about, we focused a lot on that as our gateway on the west, do we need to focus on our other gateways? So I thought that was a great comment, so I went through all of them. So I thought that was a great comment, so I went through all of them. The north one, we're kind of done now. We, we have the D R Horton project and the roundabout going in. And that's kind of our main entrance on Highland Boulevard and it's basically all developed. We have that annexation area kind of a little bit further up. It's not directly there, but we also, the general plan does address it. Do we need anything else for the northern gateway?
Um, Rob, I think the spirit behind the question was more consistency.
Yes.
You know, this concept of if we are going to be viewing the city as having gateways, then. Have gateways, but, but think about east, west, north, south, whatever they turn out to be.
Whether it be welcome to Highland signs or things on the lamp posts indicating Highland, whether it be our. New trees, see a city of trees. Icon or whatever that is, just a little plug.
So more of a concept of making sure that, looking at the gateways, that the gateways themselves have similar thematic branding. So all of them, when you, whichever way you come in is here, this is Highland.
Yes, that, that will make a lot of difference too with kind of the, like that cohesive thing again, it kind of compacts us in, you know?
Like speakers playing music, you know, so you know, you know, your senses are telling you, I'm not in American Fork anymore. I'm not in Lehigh anymore.
Big hanging petunia pots like they have in.
And Rob, my, my comments about just the Longhorn focus. I wasn't trying to be whiny about it, but just in that spirit of if Highland is a city. We should care about the east access entrance and the property owners there. We should care about the north axis from. Um, Draper, we should care about the axis from American Fork, not just be myopically focused, in my humble opinion, on just the west axis.
That's a very, it's a great comment.
And, and I realize the horse has left the barn, you know, we did only go and talk to the one group of property owners. I guess I was being a bit whiny about that. But, but in the perfect world, you would look at all of your customers and, and I think informally. We have sort of done that with the Kilgore owners, et cetera. But it was just in that spirit of saying, if we're going to choose something, then let's be consistent in how we apply it across the city.
But that would also include, we would have a major gateway, smaller gateways.
Correct.
Not everything would be the big SR ninety-two entrance. It would be.
You don't need more SR ninety-twos in Highland.
Well, and a lot of the notes.
As far as the emphasis on this entrance, like that would be a big one, the one coming north. But, you know, coming from Costco or these other areas would be minor, but still, but still be related.
And similar in theme. I, I like.
Yeah, yeah, because the thoughts from staff that you have here, a, a lot of them reference, well, there's only this much area left to be developed, right? And I think a lot of what I'm hearing and, and thinking is, is kind of improvements and not developments. You know, ways to improve the corridors and not. Do something new or, 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 or develop the little parts that aren't developed yet.
So it sounds like we want to kind of unify the gateways as, as in planning for them. We want to make sure our thematic branding includes streetscapes, other improvements. That are cohesive on all of our gateways.
Big metal palm trees.
Yeah.
It's a precedent.
We do have some big metal palm trees.
Guard towers.
I do, um, yeah, I like this word cohesive. I like how we're, you know, using it more now. That's what, that's my whole thing.
Any other discussion on the gateways? Do you want to talk any about specific ones? I realize we didn't, we didn't really talk about the, I didn't talk to the property owner for Alpine Highway. That, that was the one I was like, I guess there is a small parcel left to be developed there.
Like real small?
No, I think we're done with this. It was just more the concept rather than changing anything. And it was a bit of winging.
The consistency is, yes.
Was more about the.
Okay. I think that. Making my notes here. Um. Dark sky, or go.
Rob, I just have a, a, a thought. The, the response in the packet, not obviously, because you can't retype everything here. But I think the responses in the packet were very thoughtful, like for example, the e, the east entrance. Um, there's a lot of really good feedback there about things, but anyway. I don't know if, if anybody here has any interest or willingness to do something more to the general plan. Because it is sort of scattered throughout the plan, and if you read the plan, it's basically Longhorn. Understandably, but without going back and doing a ton of work, if there could be some communication along the lines of. Yeah, almost like, like these, these few entrances that you highlight, north entrance, Highland Boulevard, east entrance, gravel pit, A F Canyon. South entrance, you know, Ridgeview, North County Boulevard, Alpine Highway. If some way, without going into any detail, but just saying, we view these three entrances or two entrances or. Or if it is one, fine, but just we view these as the three main gateway access areas. That we're going to worry about sometime in the future.
Whether the design element.
Right. I think, I think it'd be easy to add even just one more page, but it says, we've talked about Longhorn, here's the other one, the north. And we give a little description and where we have some plans we'll point, and we also talk about this in this part of the plan that can link to it. And so we have a cohesive, like, you can find all of our plans that I reference in this one place. And also give a little bit of a description of, these are the ones we really care about. It's something like that.
Yeah, because to me, the, the responses back, you know, A through E are incredibly thoughtful, and if I was reading the general plan. I would today just read and go, oh, all we care about is our west entrance. But with, with some of these comments back, maybe trimmed down a bit, we don't have a war and peace, you know, thing going on. I think that would communicate very clearly to future councils and planning commissions, hey, we have actually thought about this. And some down, sometime down the road, please consider the east entrance or the south entrance.
I think it should be more than just one, I, or two. I, I'd like to see something at all of our main entrances. It doesn't have to be big and huge. Or if we had some big and huge something at one of this entrance, the west coming in, something smaller of the same look or something over on. North County when we become from American Fork to Highland or, but in all of the big, all of the places where people come in and when they, really, they don't know. Am I in American Fork now? Especially over there. Am I in Cedar Hills? Am I in American Fork? Am I in Highland? We don't know where we are. And I just think it'd be nice to have the same general look or specific look or whatever, but just the same kind of look in. All of our big, all of our main, at least three or four or whatever we have going on. Without going too crazy on the smaller ones, just the same look.
I think we could definitely implement something like that. I think that's some great feedback.
In the general plan.
We talk about, we kind of talk about dark skies. We didn't push it as staff because it's. Highland surrounded by a bunch of cities that don't have dark sky regulations, so there's not too much we can do except, you know, updating our own standards. Do we need more discussion? Were you, were you happy with what you had? Did you want more?
Do, do we have, what, what are the dark sky regulations? Because.
We just have, don't shine your light on your neighbor's properties.
Okay, because as you're coming down SR ninety-two, going to Smith's at night or coming home, there is a giant sports court. And the lights are so bright, it's, it's, you kind of have to squint going by there. That's how bright they are and they're on a lot.
See, that you could tell us, we'll go work with the property owner to fix that. We have regulations about athletic court lighting.
I'd like to see any, any more lights we put in. I mean, I know it's not going to be like it was when I moved here and I could see the Milky Way. But I, even walking home from here, there's certain neighborhoods that don't have streetlights and I can see a lot of sky. And then I get over to the other, you know, a couple of neighborhoods over with the lights kind of, and I can, I can see a lot less. But that this, we have places here now even that have some really good views of the stars and stuff. And I think if we can somehow going forward, when we replace lights that are already in, do, make sure they're down, downlit. And as developers or whatever come in, that they put in downlighting, it's going to make a difference.
I feel like we should address it. I know, I think, Rob, you said that, you know, no other cities around us have it. But if another city did, like if American Fork did, I think that would encourage us to include it. That, that would change the conversation we're having right now. And so I think if we address it in the general plan, you know, it could happen, Cedar Hills is like, well, you know. In our new general plan, Highland actually has this addressed in their general plan. Maybe we should also, and I think it's got to start somewhere. If it's a priority, then we include it.
We do have a note on dark skies and we talk about, we can replace our infrastructure, the city-owned streetlights and things with better lighting that doesn't trespass as much. And we, you know. That's kind of the, how we've left it there, you know, we've talked about nuisances of light. Do you, do we need to expand that as?
We don't have a ton of things that affect it other than our, our now new park.
Yeah.
Um, and schools, I don't know what we can do anything with like our big schools, so it's not our property. So I think it really is our mountain ridge park that would be an issue that we would have control over. But I do think it should be mentioned so that it is noted as a priority in our city. Absolutely.
Yes, yeah, we're concerned about it.
We haven't mentioned, and we talk about city-owned property, we should aim for that in the plan.
How would we address, it's kind of becoming popular for homes to have decorative lighting, not only at Christmas, but all year long now. So how do you address that? Like, do you have time limits, things like that?
Right now, we don't. That would be more of a, we'd have to get some strong direction because I've dealt with cities trying to implement dark sky and it. Some people love it and a lot of people hate it because now we're telling people what kind of lighting they're allowed to install on their homes and it gets. Yeah.
That would be a, that would be a thing.
That's more of a, we can talk about that if, you know, you give us direction as staff, that's more of a code implementation we can look at.
I, I think if, just to help us nudge, nudge along here, if, if people are okay with the notion of just having it be there as something. That is aspirational, um, and then later on down the road, if council agrees. Because right now, we, we're compelled to put in street lamps and they are halogen, they're not L E D, they shine up sideways.
The shape of the light that makes a difference also.
The shape, it's, it's literally the shape.
The bulb has to be within the light, you know, instead of these, like now the popular stuff is hanging all these bulbs down.
Yeah, but it's just so that we don't get down in the weeds tonight. Um, would everybody be okay with us moving on, but keeping it as a aspirational element in our design?
Dark skies is laudable, but it would take a, an upswelling of direction and support from the council for us to go that way.
Yeah.
I just got done reading a fascinating book about how animals sense the world. And it definitely changed my thoughts on these, but I'm not going to let that make me tell everybody that you need to do that, so.
No, thank you. All right, number eight.
Uh, Wes made a comment. Should we describe how we update the general plan in the plan? We talk about it being a living document. Sounds like there's not.
I thought this basically came from, let's not let twenty years or however many years pass before we do it again.
Which is great.
Simply what it, what the intent I thought was.
Anything you want to add, Wes?
I mean, so there's a couple of places where it mentions updating the plan, right? So is that just this process?
Yes.
And that's the only time? Okay.
Yep.
Because that wasn't.
Okay.
I'm not the brightest.
Once every seventeen years.
Once every seventeen years. All right, number nine, um, this is the description of mixed use in that land use category. Um. It talked about, this is the, I pulled the quote, beyond the town center, limited mixed-use opportunities may be explored at the southern gateway of North County Boulevard, and I think the language issue was. And other areas deemed appropriate. The question is, well, what are those areas with us being mostly built out? It, staff's only thought is, it leaves us open in the sense of, maybe there is some, that five-acre parcel right on the Alpine Highway. Maybe there's some weird project that we'll like. Probably not. Um, but there was a concern, like, is this allowing us to change the plan for Longhorn? I didn't view it that way because we have such a detailed description of what we want in Longhorn, but this is also something we could pull out if commission doesn't want it. Up to you.
Well, we've already designated what we want to do with the land that's, well, with the land that's in general, so do we really need deemed appropriate?
I would remove it personally.
Like, I just think it leaves it open, it leaves that little crack of a door open to start.
Yeah, we can take it out.
Getting off track of what the intent was.
Did this have anything to do with? Anything that we were talking about development center being annexed into Highland?
We have a plan for them. We'd say, we call them mixed use and we say they might be something like Ridgeview, but we'll work on that in the future. So this isn't. We've already planned for that. We've planned for Longhorn. This was, maybe there's some other weird project we just haven't thought of, but we could take it out and we can always revisit it if we need to.
Okay, so is everybody okay with us yanking deemed appropriate? Perfect.
Perfect.
Number ten.
Uh, on, the next one was on sales tax, so there's some talking about like, should we talk about the pooling of sales tax as well? Um.
I think so, because it's not mentioned really, um, a, and a lot of people are confused by it because they don't really talk about it.
It's true, we don't. I, I think our focus was on how much we're losing from not having our own zip code, so we kind of were focusing on that.
But all, the zip code and the email, the online buying and all that other kind of stuff that, but I think we should absolutely make it well-known. About the pooling and all that of, of taxes that, it, there's a lot of people who have said, we need more commercial because we need to have more taxes.
That comes up all the time. It must be commercial because we're losing, well, no, we already have too much commercial. Making more isn't going to help. It might even make it worse.
And that's what, that's what they're saying too.
And then when I tell them we get sales tax from Smiths, they're like, what? I didn't know that, like.
Yeah, and it's a large amount.
I think it's worth mentioning so we can point people to that.
Yeah, I think I'm seeing nods. We can throw in a sentence, you know, talks, you know, under the state formula, there's a pooling method.
Yeah.
But then mention also because of online sales and our, like our zip code, we think we might be losing some as well.
Yes.
We'll just have that description so it's more complete.
Our potential grab is to do our own.
Okay. We will mention pooling in there.
Well, would, would the commission be open to this sales pitch or, or, or way of communicating? Where we are a little more direct in saying something along the lines of. Um, I don't know what the right vocabulary would be, but. Um. As part of the general plan, we've gone through a detailed thorough process where we've reviewed potential income sources. And just emphatically say something like. We gain a significant portion of revenue from other. Cities and account, I, I don't know, just something along the lines where, where if a citizen is worried about it, we can point to chapter and verse without getting into any detail. And what we're basically communicating would be the way that I would communicate it over the fence, and that is, look. We actually get a ton of money from other cities, so we don't necessarily need to have a Walmart next door.
They can be sent to the high, they can be sent to the appendices. I was reading through the appendices and you can just go. And to understand more about the taxation, you know, whatever, see appendices such as such, hyperlink right there. And that's what you guys were all looking at.
And it also says right in the general plan that, the consultant said, we already have entitled more commercial than we'll actually. Which is actually justified with the rooftops that we have. So I like that that's in there to reference people to.
Yes.
I like that.
Absolutely, all that, all that stuff that, you know, talks about taxes and all this other kind of thing. Um, I think is so important and I, you know, I, I don't think anybody thinks about it. They all think about it. But they're not sure what they're thinking about it, you know, and then they see that, it's like, oh, you know, it's got to be clear.
Scared tactics to get people worked up that's brought up people in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think a high-level kind of addition to what you were saying, Chris, is it's not so much the bring in taxes in the city. You know, strengthening our commercial areas is a way for, for one business's success to help lift up the other businesses in the area. And so when you have like a strong commercial base, whether it's big like that city or small like ours. It's a boon to the entire city and to every business. Um, and, and it's not about the taxes because of the pooling.
So would, would the commission be open to combining something along the lines of twelve and ten? And I know, we're just talking about ten, but we're, we're actually discussing twelve as well.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
They kind of, um, we don't want to make your life hard, Rob, but just.
And we'd have to be careful. I think what Wes was saying too, that made me think, um, you know, we, we don't want it to, we want them to know that. We may not need more or we may need a little more or whatever, but, uh, commercial. But that doesn't mean just because we're getting taxes from other, that doesn't mean go out there and do all your shopping. We still want to keep somehow in our verbiage encouraging local, you know, shopping our own little stores when you can.
Absolutely.
Are we okay to move on to number eleven?
Yes, it sounds like, just to make sure I understand, there, you wanted some discussion of how the, the state does this taxing with that pooling concept. And maybe also tie that into, this is also why we don't. that into, this is also why we don't, you know, given we have existing commercial that, and more really isn't supported, and we also don't need it because we do gain some sales tax from commercial areas outside of the city, kind of mesh those two thoughts together.
And our commercial areas serve our residents.
And they serve, these are our neighborhood-scale commercials serving our residents.
Yeah, it's, we don't want to have to go outside of the city to do everything.
Okay. I think I've got the direction on that, so let's go to eleven. Uh, I think this was from you, Chris, question is just, we talked about kind of the R140 feathering into low density, and I think the question was, why do we have to feather into low density?
Yeah, here's, and it's, I might be the lone voice in the wilderness here, I, I don't know that we need to, in the general plan, make the presumption that the Longhorn property is going to be R110, feathering into R140. My personal preference would be not to talk about, or, or why is there this implicit assumption that it has to be high density? It may be, that might be the very best thing for the city, so I'm not necessarily throwing that out, I'm just saying, I personally would prefer it just to say, Longhorn, some kind of beautiful residential, rather than the way that it's implicitly described as, um, low density.
I think because including a low-density element, it, it overtly signals that we want to use this area as a way to serve.
Communities.
Some needs that we're seeing, you know, whether it's, um, a community that's aging out of being able to maintain R140, we want to be able to serve that element of Highland or.
And that's, that's in this thoughtfully designed senior housing could also be a good fit.
And maybe just that language does the lifting without specifically saying with slightly higher density, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
At least personally, and we don't need to, I mean, if, if nobody else feels this way, it's just my personal opinion, I don't see the reason why we need to overtly already concede that we're going to go to some, something smaller. Um, it may be that that's a brilliant idea because in the, you know, immediately following that, we talk about potentially some sort of senior housing. So if I was, pretend that I was a developer, I would read this and go, hey, Bull River, cool, five acres, two acres, feathering into single-family homes, awesome, R110, great, you guys open to that? I'm being a bit silly about it and a little exaggerated.
But then good luck getting it through, you know, to.
Yes, but, but city councils change, I mean, look up at Beacon Hills, you would imagine logically it's up on the hill, beautiful, big lots. We don't, we have these squishy little tiny Perry home, no disrespect to Perry Homes, but it's squishy and, and so we don't really know, we, we might have a planning commission tomorrow or next year, city council in two years that feels quite differently, they'll also do whatever they want.
Right, whether we change it or not, it's not going to affect that.
So that was just my two cents with, ignore it and move on, or?
Yeah, we can take out feathering.
Yeah, I would, I would.
I think the reason why we had it in there is because we were looking for, if they just do R140, it's R140, and great.
It's R140.
If they want to do something else, we were looking to try to say, all right, here's what we're going to ask from you, which is open space and buffering, and here's what we'll give, is you can feather into something, it still says low density, but low density could be R120, that's the city's.
That's low density in the city.
Highest low density that we have. So that would be, you know, if we're doing some kind of trade-off, it was saying, we're open to looking at that trade-off if you don't like R140, but nothing really beyond that.
Can't we do that, but even without the word, even without putting it in there that we're feathering to low density? I mean, if somebody comes and says.
Yeah, we can change the language.
Yeah, I think, I think this would be a, a master planned area, because I think if this went R140, it would look not great for the city because it would just be a big wall down SR92.
No.
By right, that's what they could do. But if it's a plan where you could take care of the residents on Bull River, we might have an opportunity for age-restricted or senior housing, but at that point, they have to come into a rezone, and we have a lot of say. We can say, hey, we want to buffer on SR92 with that picture of the bull that says, welcome to Highland, and like, okay, you know, and, and not have a fence along there.
Yeah, yeah.
Have all single-story, smaller homes and restrict the two-story, there's just a lot, you can, you can put the, the PO zone along Bull River because then it's closed on site, it's professional offices, but it, it brings it to us to accomplish the other goals of our gateway. If it goes R140, there's no gateway, they're just going to put a fence, they're going to put the cheaper house, you know, that'll have no lot premium, and then it'll all be just fenced in. And, and Bull River was like, that's what we, I said, actually, no, because at least with the rezone, we could get the fencing along our property, we can get the buffer we want, there's just more flexibility to allow in our plan for a planned development. Instead of feathering, I guess I would say, we're open to a planned development, which would mean part of it would stay R140, part of it would be a little lower density, part of it would be this, oh, and we want a gateway parcel out on the road so it doesn't, you know, people see the little bull thing that says, welcome to Highland or whatever.
We just wanted to avoid the planned development because some developers hear that and say, ah, I know what that means, and it's Ridgeview, and we're like, that's not what this means for here. So that was, if.
Well, you, you kind of, you kind of explain your, what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for. So if there's better language, we'll change it.
I think I was, okay, is everybody okay, fine with the concept and we just move on? So we don't go down in the weeds here?
Yeah.
Or would you?
I just don't like the low-density, single-family homes, I, I mean, if we knew it was going to be R120, or, I just see someone seeing that and.
But low, low density's good, high density bad, at least to us.
Yeah, really.
So low density's good. Or are you worried about that, Deborah? Are you worried about low density? You want six-story, twenty per acre?
I don't want anything, I want a single-story.
Okay.
I see the mountains and the trees.
Okay, well, well, how does everybody feel? Should we just move on, or do you want to tweak anything then?
I like the way it's written.
With the explanation, I, I like that it gives the city some leeway.
Yeah, it gives the city, uh.
It becomes a participation.
Yeah, so let's move on.
Wait a minute, it's, hold on, it, it is a little confusing because it says, like Deborah was confused, it says large lots, feathering into basically large lots, that doesn't make sense.
Feathering into future low density.
Low density is large lots.
Twenty to one twenty to one ten.
Oh, well, R120 is low density, like, in the planning world, anything less than four units an acre is low density.
So it's half, half acre.
That's the cutoff is what we're saying is, we're not going, you can't propose town homes there, you can't tell us.
Yeah, you can't go higher.
We're going to do, you know, 6,000 square foot lots, and like, no, that's not what our plan says for this area.
But in Highland, R120 is a higher density.
Would you take that out and just put R120, feathering into R120?
I, I want to leave it open because maybe we'll do like Beacon Hills, where it's not really R120, but you get better open space from it, as long as the density stays the same, you know.
Yeah, overall.
Do those kind of calculate overall, so I'd like to leave it open to that rather than saying a zone.
Yeah, here, that's a good way to look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Would, would the commission be okay if we moved on to twelve?
Yes.
I think we've covered twelve, actually.
And we've covered twelve, so can we go to thirteen or?
Yes, uh, so this is, just highlight the page that we recommended to add in as staff, which is this page, uh, just a description of the parkway detail, what it is, so we have a picture of kind of one of our older parkway details, and then they did a rendering showing, you know, as we convert that to zero scape, here's what it could look like, and just that way, we have something in our general plan that says, these are the roads where we're going to implement the parkway detail as part of our placemaking efforts.
I like the example.
I like the example, but I have a, a fear. As everyone goes to zero escaping and uses rock instead of mulch, um, all of our leaves turn to dirt, and then it's all weeds, and no one wants to weed in boulders, and it turns into a junk heap, and I have many examples in my neighborhood, and no one weeds their rocks. So I'm just trying to come up with, what is the solution? Because ever, I'm watching the next neighbor just rip out all his mow strip because he's trying to be compliant and he's worried about PI, um, and the cost, and I'm, my husband's one of them, he's ready to rip up everything and concrete it, and I'm like, ah. So, um, I do see this problem because you get one-year, two-year, three-year, maybe it looks good, and, and you, and that's if you're lucky and you're active with it, but otherwise it turns to weeds you cannot pull. So what are we doing and are we thinking about this?
We are, I mean, we have areas of parkway detail that are zero scape.
That are sprayed with yellow spray.
And our par, public works guys have to go out, their parks crew, and they have to maintain it, and I've talked, because Josh came in, he's our park superintendent to, because there was some comment like, oh, it's lower maintenance, he had to explain, it's different maintenance, it is not lower maintenance.
Yeah.
We can't just mow it, but it, you know, there's trade-offs, and so, but it uses less water, and that's the benefit that we're going to.
And I know a lot of people who are fine going, psh, with my electric mower, eh, but they won't bend over and pick up a weed.
So in, in terms of the city parkway details, we would maintain it, but in private, I mean, we could talk about zero scape standards, I know there's some comments about zero scape standards, those, I think we'd more of, we've talked about updating landscaping requirements because we've had some issues, that's on our docket to actually have our code be updated to address that a little bit clearer. So I think we need to address that, um, as long as you're comfortable with the zero scape concept, we'll keep it in the general plan, but then we will need to visit the details in a future.
Zero scaping, it, it isn't zero scape, right? It can include any kind of natural ground covering, it can include clover, clover's a great way to, to zero scape and.
So that was another thing I was asking, do we have any codes against clover lawns?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think just in the spirit of moving us along here, um, that's quite detailed. So the answer, the, the question you asked is, should we? I think this is awesome, keep this in, it's great. And then at a later date, we can, you know, come up with something presented to council and see if they're willing to change things. Would you be okay with that, Audrey?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. But I think we will agree. Okay.
Sounds like we like the parkway detail. Um, fourteen, there was a comment about incorporating streetscape improvements, traffic calming into the Highland thematic branding. Um, I think that was a Wes comment.
I think we've talked about this already, and I think, you know, with the, partly with the gateways, but partly with just an overall kind of public amenities kind of thing, I think one other thing to mention could be, um, these, uh, traffic calming measures that also serve as beautifying measures, you know, when you have like lush medians or road sides or, um, you know, even bulb-outs that include some kind of landscaping, stuff like that, you know, it's, it serves a functional purpose of traffic calming, but also is quite attractive, and it could be something to include to keep in mind, hey, when we are coming up with these thematic elements, let's keep in mind that maybe they could serve a functional purpose to protect pedestrians or, you know, ease traffic or slow traffic or whatever.
Wes, I like that idea, just from practical experience, though, I did that little development on 6,000 West.
Right.
And I approached city staff as well as city council formally three times, and they, the answer was, no, we've got this traffic calming toolbox, I volunteer to pay for it. And the answer was still, no, we don't want to do that. So I love the idea, but in terms of putting it in the general plan as a requirement, maybe that, maybe that would help us get where we would like to be, but it's really.
Or at least as an encouragement, like, it's, I don't think people realize that you can have like the best of both worlds, like, you can, you can have significant traffic calming measures that also are beautifying, that really adds something aesthetically to the area also, and you're getting these two awesome effects from.
I had a, a comment earlier, we talked about placemaking, you know, talking about adding some language and about uni, you know, having a unified public amenities and streetscapes is, it seems like this is a similar concept, so we could add in, you know, and, as we implement traffic calming, to incorporate our streetscape and placemaking ideas into those traffic calming measures.
Love it. That's cool.
And it is a psychological fact that aesthetics calm, you know, the, the beauty, natural beauty or, or any beauty that's, is, is calming to people. So if someone's driving down the street and they're mad because they have to slow down, they look at the beautiful landscaping and then they feel fine again. It is, it is a fact.
Okay. Um, next comment was, it was in the transportation plan, um, there's a comment, I believe, Audrey, you made it, about noise impacts of transportation, should we address that somehow in the trans, in our, um, general plan?
That's where we asked. The heck was so bad? It's over, everybody, no.
Microphone.
Just, I mean, just, just street racers down SR92, it's so bad.
Ten o'clock at night.
Eleven, ten, eleven, twelve, it's so bad.
We need to.
Yeah, even our city noise, you know, noise ordinance, it's silly because it's laughable because you can pop out a.
Don't we already have stuff like that in place, though? I mean.
It's called police officers, and we don't have enough of them.
SR92 violates that by default.
So we're saying, hire more cops and.
Yep, it was a desperate attempt.
I would love a.
I'm, I'll be a part-time cop, I'll have my little gun.
I'll stand up there.
Two nights a week, month, I'll sit out there.
I'll probably get my own kids, but that's okay.
All right. All right, I, I wasn't hearing consensus of how to address it in the general plan, I mean, obviously it's a concern, but.
And I was just, honestly, too, I don't know if, I know there's, there's sound ordinances for semis with braking.
Yes.
Right? So can't there be with like glass packs you put on cars?
Oh, those motorcycles.
And things like that? How come trucks have to comply, but people can add extra noise-making and it echoes so terribly on our mountains and, and in our ravine that it just, it's so loud.
Well, yeah, and even going down 92, um, like, and it's the same time every night that the bikes that go and they're racing, I don't think they're racing, it's going.
Exactly.
It's, it's more of an enforcement.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think enforcement's the issue.
It is, I mean, we just need to, well, if the city council agrees, they can just let the police know that we'd like to enforce that more.
I mean, yeah, it's more of the number of police and, yeah.
Do, do we ever have anything, like, when I was young and racing on the track, well, mostly, and, um, we had noise ordinances with our cars, they had, the mufflers had to be a certain way and blah, 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 do we have any of that? Because I know that.
There are state standards for that to some degree, it, it really isn't.
It's not enforced.
The problem is, you hear it, and you think, the city, there's no rules about it, there are rules about it, you have to catch the person in time to do something about it.
He slows down.
I can tell them where to stand, I can tell the police where to stand.
Slow down, they disappear into a neighborhood, and you have to have an officer there seeing it happen, so it's not that we don't know it's an issue, that we don't want to fix it, it's just enforcement, I mean, we have, and this kind of goes to not quite the next one of the other comments about like e-bikes and things on trails, we know it's happening, the police have actually come and reported, the problem is, they can't, they could go say, hey, kids, stop, and they ride off on their electric scooter, and they can't catch up to them physically, they could try to drive, but they can't drive over our park, and they don't want to run a kid off the road and kill them, so.
Bike police. Bike police, because you know what, every time I'm on there biking, I see it happening, so if you had some officers that were bike-only maybe, going down there, they're going to find them every day.
It, I mean, the thing is, it's always a matter of funding and priorities.
I think the answer is for the parents to take care of the.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen, we know this, that is not going to happen.
Exactly. I think unfortunately, like, none of it can really be addressed in the general plan.
I think if you're over fifty, you should be able to use anything.
Sorry, I need my briefcase.
There should be an.
Would you mind if we move on to the next topic? Would you mind if we move on to the next topic?
But something's in the general plan, even if it's sentence or two about something makes people think. If they're going to read it, it not saying you have to do this, but we need, you know, we need more of that or we, whatever. However, we could word some things in the right place.
If we have signage, at least it's there.
People think.
So we'll get to the the trail thing.
Case sixteen, discuss tree roots and sidewalk trail damage.
There is a a comment made about, you know, tree roots and impacts to sidewalks.
I don't think that's part of the general plan. To me, that's part of the execution enforcement, maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance. Of course, it needs to be fixed.
We all agree it needs to be taken care of. This is not the place to do it.
I was, did that have to do anything with the plans that were suggested for new developments?
Yeah, that's the only thing.
Were too big within the space?
Yeah.
Is that part of why this is on here? Because if they, if they are too big to be in that sidewalk easement, they're going to rip up.
Yeah, I mean, we do have tree standards and, you know, we have our approved list of park strip trees, which some people pay attention to. And then sometimes even those trees, if they're not maintained properly, they still damage the ground. So it's one of those. We're going to do an inventory as staff. It's one of the projects Chris has is to go through the entire city and inventory all of our sidewalks and trails and see what needs to be done in terms of, you know, grinding, leveling them out, cutting down trees.
There's, there's.
It's just a long process and it takes time.
And it's hard here. I think I commented on one of the pages about the fact that there are trees. Because I I was really into all this stuff, things can point out a teach about trees, so I had to learn about trees. But here, you can plant a lot of the deep rooted trees that will, you know, go down and they won't spread out and all that. The ones that are meant to go down into the tap water, but of course you've got to have tap water. You've got to have a tap, you know, down there. Um, but you've got to water these trees deeply, a lot, and not just for the first year. If you want these trees to not pull, even the ones that supposedly don't pull up the sidewalk. We we have some we have to take out because we, it pulled up our sidewalk and they weren't supposed to. They were deep rooted. We watered them. We did all that stuff. As much as we dared because we are, we were water conscious, but.
Yeah.
So we, there's a lot with trees here because of our climate. You know, we're not, we're not a, you know, England or New England or the South or anywhere where there's a lot of humidity and all that stuff. We have to kind of deal with some of that stuff a little better, I think, as a city.
Okay, so can we move on to sixteen? I I beg your pardon, seventeen?
Seventeen. Yeah. So this was a comment just, should we note in the description of the Canal Boulevard project about traffic calming specifically?
In in general across the city, yes, but I don't, I think this is very specific.
Yep. This was a, the the tr- the project notes in the transportation master plan are very specific to roadway improvements for capacity. Because that's what they really care about. The traffic calming is definitely something we care about and we are implementing. We've done a lot of things in Canal Boulevard and we'll do more there and other places. So do you want something for Canal Boulevard or just talk about it? You know, we still have it in the general plan overall.
Personally, I don't, why would we focus on Canal Boulevard versus? I would rather just have something saying traffic calming, traffic safety, you know, little kiddies is important to our city character or something like that.
Okay.
I specified canal because that's what I remember hearing all the time.
Is that kind of consensus? Just make sure it's a general wet. My staff was, that's more of a future code. Oh, I skipped eighteen. This was a comment. I'm I'm trying to get this through. Yeah, I, sure, I believe you made a comment about, uh, the plan for North County to expand to seven lanes, which is huge. It's also not something we can control. So it's more in the transportation plan as a, you're not going to do this, we should be aware of it kind of thing. Not that we have any say over how big they make their roads. We can definitely oppose it and you dot will, yeah.
But we can say that we would like to collaborate with Alpine City in the cost and not take care of all of it.
Yes, and we added that note about sharing costs for the forty-eight hundred West project and that. And then, so it sounds like no change on that one. Then on nineteen was, do we need to get more specific about our detached ADU future regulations?
So my thoughts about that would be no. We we already have a fairly detailed planning commission derived ADU proposal that is sitting with the city council. Um, as commissioners, if you don't like that, let's, you know, take an axe to it, revisit it. But I think that's getting down into the weeds a little too much for a plan.
Yes. Okay, sounds like that's just, we have it as a goal, but we'll deal with it later. Uh, so this was in our modern income housing strategy. There's several comments on this strategy and this implementation measure. So it was work with the planning commission, city council, update land use plan and the general plan to allow for. And so this is the portion that got added in from the workshops, which is mixed use, modern income development in the town center. And then the rest of it is what was previously in the modern income housing plan, which is higher density housing adjacent to commercial retail, commercial one and appropriate plan development zones. Um, I think there's kind of a mix of questions of the town center versus the appropriate plan development zones. What does that mean? From staff's view, it was, part of this was, it's got adopted prior to my time, but looking back, I think it was just near Ridgeview. Maybe there'd be some expansion of it. I think we're thinking mostly going south to the other state owned property, which is why this got written the way it did. I don't see any other planned developments that really can, maybe Wild Rose will do something along North County Boulevard, similar to what they've already done. But that's probably about it. Were there any changes that we needed to make to what has been put in here? Are you good with what's written?
Well, if if it specifically says town center, it kind of makes you think that it's in the town center as opposed to Ridgeview or North County Boulevard.
So that was the addition that was directed from the planning commission and council during the the land use workshop was looking at that as part of our modern income housing. Sounds like majority are fine with leaving it in there as, this doesn't direct us to adopt any zone. It's a, it's a plan. Okay. Um, water element, we had a lot of comments on this. Um, so I'll just go through each one. Uh, there's a comment, you know, should we discuss more in detail how we measure and report water usage? Yes, it was more of, you know, does that need to be in the?
Question everyone is asking me.
Everyone's concerned about PI metering right now, but that's going to be a a whole discussion about rate structures in the future in a general plan. Okay, it sounds like we're good not getting more detailed on that. Uh, there was a discussion, should we add in one of our conservation strategies? There's a couple of details about, you know, conservation strategies, you know, should we add some more in that list of strategies that are in the water element? Um, one of the things, we have a conservation plan that was adopted in twenty seventeen, updated in twenty twenty-two and scheduled to be updated every five years. So twenty twenty-seven, we'll look at our strategies and where we're at again. So some of these could be a, let's save it for the conservation plan and then adopt new strategies in there based on how we're seeing PI data. So if you're good with what was in there, we can leave it as is, but what are your thoughts?
Are we currently subsidizing irrigation water with groundwater when it gets low?
Yes, we have a few wells that we will pump groundwater for, usually in August timeframe.
And are we currently having to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that was actually a question because from DWR, we had some question about, do we actually have enough water to support usage? Um, so we had our engineers looked at it and the short answer is yes, we'll be fine.
When you say enough water, enough wells or in the groundwater?
Both. Well.
Because if the other guy's taking.
If if the aquifer dries out, we all have a huge problem. That doesn't matter, you know.
Right, but usually they want you to monitor that, right?
Yes. So that's part of a big statewide collaboration on the aquifer in terms of just our water rights and water sources that we own. Um, culinary, uh, is, will be consistent. Essentially, our our forty year plan shows that at build out, we will need um, about a little over thirteen thousand acre feet per year of water. Currently, we hold sixteen thousand seven hundred. When drought conditions hit, our allocation is reduced because we, we're not allowed to take as much from our water right. So it drops down to about eleven thousand five hundred. But as build out happens, we also keep getting more water dedicated to the city. So that will offset it. So we're anticipating we'll get to around fourteen thousand even in drought conditions as a reliable water source. So we're confident we can keep building out the city for what we have planned with our current water standards and sources. Now, it doesn't mean we shouldn't conserve because that helps our water sources long term and helps the aquifer.
Are we on twenty-two yet?
Uh, yeah, let's talk about twenty-two.
Okay, because I think that is a really easy way to, um, save some water. Just delaying that a little bit, shortening the irrigation system a little bit. I know people like it really green in April right away. Some people do. But, I mean, if it helps us save some water, I think it's a good idea.
Does that affect, um, anyone who's doing fields? They need to get a crop of hay or anything like that done?
Yes. So the typical, so by long, long tradition, the irrigation season has always been mid-April to mid-October. And that's when the canals started running and ditches started running and people started turning on their head gates and flooding their fields to water them. Because that's the growing season.
Well, you also have people with gardens.
And so people, people do relax. We get calls beginning April saying, when are you going to turn on the water? And we get angry calls on October sixteenth saying, why have you turned off my water? So it's, it's already hard for us to maintain the dates we have. Now, may not be about, we would save water.
But as a gardener, they save Mother's Day and that's beginning of May.
We have people who get their lawns out as soon as they can.
Well, it's not lawns, but it's, but like if you're doing like your garden on a drought.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. Microphone.
Yeah.
They'll also just tap their culinary. You're just going to get more people tapping the culinary, which is worse.
Yeah, that's what they'll do.
So commission, do you want to add this as a potential strategy? Do I have a majority?
In years of drought?
Well, at least my two cents worth is, I think all of us care deeply about this water thing. But I don't know how, to me, this seems incredibly detailed, very specific. It's almost like a code enforcement type of thing. And so I'm not sure if this belongs in the general plan. And yeah, at this level of detail, even though I, yes, 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 to all of the above. But it seems like from a general plan point of view, it should still be, here's what we have. We want to be careful about it and then maybe we as a planning commission take some of the very specific things and propose things to city council. I don't know.
Is the state requiring more from us in a general plan is what I'm asked.
Yes, and that's what the Department of Water Resources comments were. So we did, the majority of our water element, they were, they loved. It was just they had a couple of comments and so we've, we've actually gone through and addressed those. So anything beyond the the couple of comments from DWR is just up to the planning commission.
Maybe we could do some education of the public and just say, hey, if you wait a little bit longer, it really helps.
Well, if we're metering, aren't, isn't the goal to say, if you use this much water, your bill is this? But as you start to progress, your, the gallons per dollar just start going up? And if you want to use a lot of water, you just pay a lot of money.
That's, that's the goal. It it will, will build into.
Because right now it's a free for all. I pay a flat fee and I could flood my yard every day if I want.
Yes. So that's why we're going to the metering.
I have friends who just say, I I pay more. I'll just pay more.
Some people will pay more, some people will not. So. So it sounds like we're not, I don't have a consensus to add this in.
Yeah, I I think like just language that's like in times of need, the city will explore creative ways to.
We already have a water restriction plan that if it hits drought, so.
Well, as long as that's addressed in the plan, the city plan that, so people know we do care.
I can tell you that there are people watering their lawn.
I think we're good. Sounds like we're good. Uh, on twenty-three, zero escaping, we've kind of talked about that. We can update our code standards for it to give more detail what should be allowed and not allowed. I don't know that we need it in the general plan specifically, but I'm open to thoughts.
I feel like it's something we address, you know, outside of the plan. Just in our zero escaping standard and stuff. I think it needs to be addressed and because I think that people will use it as a resource, not just as like restrictions, but I'd like to do something. But what could I do? What is there, you know? And so I think to kind of, to the spirit of Sherry's point, the the more robust and specific we can make that outside the plan, the better.
I think that's absolutely correct. Give more guidance to people on how to do zero escaping, how to do it well. So I think, but that's more of a code update for us to do as staff, if you're comfortable with that. Okay, twenty-four, enforcement as an issue. Do we need to mention that or just leave it as the practical reality of all of this?
It'll happen soon enough.
Okay. Um, incentives for smart irrigation controls on private property. Should we add that as a potential option in our strategies?
What is?
Uh, that the city might incentivize people, you know, either water credit in their bill, you know, if you've installed a smart meter that shuts off your water when it rains and the like. Should we add that as an incentive goal or strategy to our conservation plan?
Yeah.
Sounds like.
I like that one.
As one of, because there's a long, there's a table of different strategies we have. It sounds like I got a majority saying, add that as a potential incentive. Okay.
That's part of the education.
Okay, on, uh, so drinking water, just so you're aware, they asked the question, does your code support this kind of water wise landscaping? And our answer is yes. And, um, we talked about, you know, if we do plan developments, we can incorporate these water wise principles into it. You know, we can look at doing something like that, but our code also supports it. And then they ask, can you just basically show water comparisons for usage? And we said, okay. So we just added a paragraph that shows, uh, an acre lot uses this, a half acre, a quarter acre, and Ridgeview kind of uses this. There's no direction that says, therefore, the city should change anything. It just says, water usage does somewhat depend on lot size. So we've given the numbers that DWR asks us to give them. And then finally, they talked about, you know, continuing the table about the reliable water supply. That, those were the numbers we polled that I just kind of walked through. We do have a reliable water supply because they said, you know, they'd recommend shifting land use code. And we're going to tweak the numbers a little bit based on what the research we've done and say, our data shows that we will have a reliable water supply to support our land use development.
And does it take into consideration that when you have a bigger lot, you have a higher, uh, water allotment? Like when you develop a two acre.
Our our plan does, yes.
Right, okay.
So I think we've gone through and we've answered their questions and without doing, saying that the city needs now change land use because we we can show in our data, we have the water to support Highland's development, preferred development style. And that, we're just now giving them that number. So if you're all good with that, we're on to our last few comments. Sorry, go ahead.
Rob, just a little comment. I was a little annoyed actually at this sort of mandated, you must change it because it was kind of directive instead of this, would you be willing to consider? It was just as stated. And I thought, wow, well, why don't you just mandate land use at the DWR level and not permit land use authorities like cities and planning commissions and city councils to make those decisions?
Okay, final comments. Um, I think this is a Sherry question. Uh, should we talk about enforcement or signage regarding e-bikes and cycles on our trails? We have a page, we actually, I was thinking in response to this, we have a, one of our strategies of that chapter talks about improving our trails and maybe we we could add some language about end signage and enforcement of proper use of the trails to that implementation measure.
Um, just with the upgrade in electric scooters, I was, what is, what's the road? We call it the hill of death. It goes by Smiths, it goes up into Lehigh, goes past the Covington. What is that one? We call it the hill of death. Let me put our hands up. Anyway.
A roller coaster.
Yeah, the roller coaster hill. Anyway, whatever. I can't remember the the number of the street. But I was following a scooter going forty-five miles an hour with just a helmet. And he was just going, so they can go that much, but because they're an electric scooter, they can go on the trail.
We don't, we don't allow any.
He was going up the hill.
There's different classi- classifications of e-bikes. We don't allow basically the higher powered ones on city trails.
Yeah.
Now, don't allow, people do it and we try to enforce it as we can, but we're trying to do better about it.
So signage would be great.
But isn't this an area where the city, you have to have a law before you can enforce something? So this isn't, somebody has to make the law, then we have to make the signs and we put it up. So is, I don't know what the word is, but it's somebody else's area to manage?
To an extent, and I think the question's more just, should we have that in the general plan as making sure that we have the enforcement mechanisms to protect the trails, something along those lines.
I think protection, yes, but define it down to X horsepower or size of wheels, no.
Yeah, that's just, are you comfortable with general language, making sure, you know, and ensure there's appropriate signage and regulations to protect trails from unauthorized use, something along those lines.
And if there is regulation, if there is regulation on which types, that maybe needs to be in the signage so that people know.
Yeah, we could put that in the signs and make sure that's clear.
Yeah, because a lot of cities have banned e-bikes except for the ones where it's pedal. Yeah, because a lot of cities have banned e-bikes, except for the ones where it's pedal assist for people that are 50 and older that
Yeah, they're awesome.
Yeah, you can't have a throttle, they have to have the pedal.
Yes.
Because I have a pedal assist, because otherwise I want to go biking, period.
No, they're fun, they're very fun.
About 45 and older. No, I can't survive it. I go biking with the priest, I have to have that, I can't keep up with those guys.
No, they're awesome, but these are like motorcycles.
But the throttle ones, the throttle ones, I agree, 100% agree, but the ones where you have to pedal.
No, love those, those are amazing.
Or we can say 50 and above, get the electrical bikes, something
45 and above.
That's what fast is.
45, I mean, when I was 45, I was pedaling.
Hey, you know, fellow commissioners, the good thing about this process is we, as commissioners, out of just this meeting, we probably have got 20 separate or potentially good proposals that we could deliberate on and then propose something really meaningful from a execution, you know, an actual code amendment
I have a couple things already.
Specific to a few things, so good idea.
Okay, I think I got direction on that. 27, this was, there's a comment about like the mouth of AF Canyon, talked about like partnering with the, the federal government on a visitor center or something like that. That's part of kind of the gateway strategy as well, and I think, Sherry, you might have had the comment, like, is it just a visitor center? Do we need that? Or, you know, our thought, my thought when I was, you know, like, should we expand that? Say, you know, some kind of welcoming, interactive nature center, welcoming people up to the canyon in that open space. But what are your thoughts, Commission and Sherry?
Like a joint thing?
Like a joint thing, a partnership.
I would like to know how much that would cost, because there's already, we already have that new and improved area at Temp Cave
Yeah.
That they, that they put there, and that's very close to the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that we need to, it sounded like they wanted to put another one, like a Highland type of one, welcome to Highland, you know, entrance to AF Canyon type of thing. I don't know that we need something that elaborate, but it would be nice to have some signage and, and some things there.
That was kind of the intent was to say, we have this beautiful canyon, we should probably try to partner with them to come up with something that incorporates the canyon into Highland, and we have both sides working together on that.
Yeah, Sherry, to answer your question, I, I mean, if you go and try and access AF Canyon, it's backed all the way from that guard shack, all the way in there. And so even though that Temp Cave thing is, is beautiful, the way that they've done it, I would prefer personally, I wish that they would move it down to that just east of the Stake Center where they own like 27 acres or something. I wish that they would move all the parking and ticketing and all that stuff down there, even though it may be redundant, just thinking about the sheer volume of trying to get up the canyon, it's crazy, you can't, where, where they pull off to go and do rock climbing, all the way back around there. I've, I've waited there for 45 minutes, hour and a half sometimes. And so my thought was, if there was, and I don't know what it would look like, but something on either the Kilgore side or getting the federal government to do something. I know that mayor has spoken to, can't remember the fellow's name, both Brady as well as Mike, and I don't know if Senator Curtis has been involved in those discussions to try and get them to make a decision, it's probably going to take them 20 years. But at least that was my thinking, is that it wouldn't just be a sign thing, if we could somehow pull some of that canyon traffic out and have it all be processed down before you get into the canyon.
That's, that's not a bad idea at all. I, I was just thinking, I don't know that Highland wants to put their own visitor center entrance at a high cost to Highland.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't thinking, I beg your pardon, I should have responded differently. I was thinking more about lobbying and seeing what federal pork allotment.
I think that's great, I think that's a great idea.
And then basically have the federal government, because imagine what they have up there by the caves, if that was down there next to the Stake Center, that would look pretty cool, and then it would be very easy for Highland to just put at minimal cost a few little things that make it look like this great gateway entrance into Highland.
Says like, welcome to Highland Canyon.
That would allow
That would allow school field trips with buses to load up down here, so my children rock climb and do Ironmans, and my daughter rides from Cottonwood and goes all the way up to, goes to the top of Tempanogas, goes back side of Heber, and then comes back and goes all the way back to Cotton. And just watching the accidents that happen on that road, just trying to drive it when the sun is in your eye in the morning, you're completely blind. So just the danger with how narrow it is anyway, anything that could alleviate some of the traffic, especially with the buses and the backing up, everyone's running that canyon and they're cycling that canyon. It's so dangerous. So I just think anything to help put some of that traffic out
On that town.
Here, resolve it and have less vehicles going up would be brilliant.
Yeah, and, and Sherry, to your point though, I don't, I don't really have a prescriptive idea, it's just that sort of notion of in our general plan, somebody go invent some magic to do with the eastern access point, whatever that is, because right now, it's just ugly. You come out of the canyon and it's just a gravel pit on the right, and then it looks like a gravel pit on the left where we just have the river coming.
We don't have enough water over there.
It sounds like it's, the implementation is good, because we're, we're just talking broad strokes. City should work with the people who actually have the money and the property to do something like that. We like that, okay.
Yeah.
Then I think we're on our last question, which was about basements in high water areas. I think, I can't remember who asked the question. We don't prohibit them, we just, we've had a few areas where they have, like Highland hollows, we just, as part of the development stage, we have them do geotech studies and they'll result like, oh, there's high water here, so we say, okay. We put notes on the plat that says, you have to do a site-specific grading plan, or you have to put foundation drains in, you have to have an engineer design your, if you're going to put in a basement. There's a few places where we say, we've never said no basements, we just say, heads up, you've got a water problem here, and so you have to do some additional mitigation if you're going to put a basement in.
And we make sure that when they
And the developer knows it, and it's
Because he did, he's the one that paid for the test, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the developer, they're going to have to show us what they're going to do, right?
They show us what they're going to do, and
Yeah, and if we haven't had a problem, then I think we're good.
Okay, I think no changes on that then?
Have you had issues where that's been a problem?
The way it was worded, sorry, I'll just explain my, it just said high water areas, and it's like, why would we be allowing basements in high water areas? I know other places I've lived, you know, if it's near, like, for instance, the Utah Lake, I don't believe they have basements right next to the lake where the wetland is, so I just wondered why.
They just build them on top.
I think it's because our, our, the areas are more limited, and where we've had it, they've been able to mitigate it enough, and basically we say, if you want to build a basement, it's on essentially the, the developer and the lot owner to decide if that's what they want to do. We try to make sure there's enough data and notice so they know that there's an issue with it, so they can plan accordingly when they buy the lot.
I saw that, I saw that explanation in, when I was reading this, and that's why I thought if it's not, if we haven't had a problem, and if we are making sure they're following through with their, whatever they have to do to keep it from flooding.
So far not.
Yeah.
And that's all the comments, unless I missed something? If there's anything else anyone wants to bring up?
The only thing I was going to comment about the high water is if there was something we could put in there that said, this is not a good idea, do not do it, and if you do, the city is not liable for the damage you created for yourself.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Beyond that, they should be able to do whatever they want to ensure or finance themselves.
Yeah.
Might be something I add into my plat notes in terms of a code change, not the general plan, but that way I can put, I can have a code to say, put this on your plat, because I like to warn people about those kinds of things.
And I, I love for, to have people have houses in unusual and beautiful places, but I really don't like paying for it to be rebuilt every few years.
Yes, they haven't, they're not going to fall.
So Rob, after this, and you kind of put together our comments, does it go to council and then they do a similar process?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Do we see that, or are we able to see that?
Would you, I mean, so our, our hope is to get a recommendation, just because we're running up towards the end of the year, we want it done, and I want to follow a similar process with the councils we did with you all, which is, we'll present it at their November meeting, saying, here's the draft, everyone go look at it, read it, give us any comments, and then in December, we'll do this process again and hold another public hearing on it. So if you're good with
We'll have a meeting in November.
Well, you all, my hope is we won't have any more planning commission meetings for the rest of the year, because you have had twice the planning commission meetings this year with the general plan, so.
Just, Robert, can I ask a quick question? This is more of like a high-level thing. What if we as the city wanted to make some kind of change or addition to the general plan in two years?
You, you just do that.
We just amend it.
You just do it.
Same, same process as this, a little bit easier because we don't have to do the huge notice that we do for this one.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, like, we've, we've done that with the road classifications, those have been amendments to the general plan. We'll just run a similar thing.
Mm-hmm. Cool picture.
All right, so we did, I, oh, that date's wrong, I actually, it was September 9th. Oh, go ahead.
Rob, just, I may be jumping the gun here, but do we need to hold a public hearing?
Yep, I was just going to give my final comment, which is
Okay, go ahead, please.
We give all the public notices, there's additional notices you have to give for a comprehensive public, or general plan update. I went through, I gave those notices, I mailed the notices, we've had this advertised in various ways for two years now. It meets the mineral requirements for the general plan and does a lot more. We appreciate all your time and efforts on this, our recommendation is to hold a public hearing, take any comments, and then make a recommendation. The recommendation that we put into the staff report, and it basically says, to recommend approval of the general plan incorporating the changes that have been directed by the planning commission this evening, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's open it up for public comments.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Doug Courtney, and I'm speaking this evening as a member of the city council. I would just like to thank everybody on the commission for all of the hard work on this. I view this, although it is something that the council ultimately approves, I view the general plan as fundamentally a planning commission work and document, and you all have done a really amazing job putting it together and putting something wonderful together that's really going to serve the city going forward. So I just really like to thank all of you for all of the hard work, all of the extra meetings to work with the consultants, and a great job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. It would be remiss of us not to also express gratitude, because really, it's the city staff that have done this, quite frankly. So Jay had here when he joined us, and that is no longer. All right, let's conclude the public comments, and would anybody like discussion about anything? Or would you feel good about moving towards making a motion?
I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the comprehensive update and amendment to the Highland City General Plan and Transportation Master Plan as presented tonight, including the discussion, the discussed changes and, and then, yeah, incorporating all changes and additions approved by the planning commission tonight.
I'll second. Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Yes.
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 Do we have just calendar, anything to, okay, so we don't, would, would anybody, does anybody have any items that they would like to propose that would merit us having a meeting in November or in December?
I think we have long planning commission meetings on both nights. Let's just plan for a really long one.
Dreadfully sorry that nobody seconded that, let's move on. Okay, city council, November 18th, and then the 2nd of December, and the 2nd of December one is realistically going to be the one where they'll make the decision on
Put that on their calendar, I guess.
Yeah, but, but 18th of November as well is going to be helpful and instructive. Would anybody like to make a motion to have us dismiss, or would you like to read, I don't know, The Old Man in the Sea, The War and Peace, or something like that?
I move that Wes be required to show up for those two meetings on his own.
I'll be here with bells on.
I make a motion to dismiss the meeting.
I second that.
Okay.
Yes.
Wonderful. We are dismissed, thank you all. Heather, thank you very much, and to our world-famous Hollywood recorder in the corner who likes to pretend to be in